So, let us start. Firstly, the minutes of the meeting held on the 11th of June 18, laid on the table thirty half an hour ago. Are we happy that I sign those after the meeting?
Great.
Apologies for absence.
Well, Pansyl Ward has given apologies to you maybe a little too late, but I am expecting him. I've not heard from him yet.
Disclosure of interests. Have we had any?
None, so.
Questions of members in the public?
More than received.
Questions from members?
More than received.
Right, item six. We have the Monitoring Officer's Report. Chairman? To tell you what we're at it.
Yes, thank you. This is the annual report from the Monitoring Officer, summarising the complaints that have been submitted to me since the last report and how those complaints have been dealt with. So paragraphs five to seven provide a summary level of data statistics on the complaints received and what the outcome of them has been. As you can see from paragraph eight, I've not needed formally consult the council's independent person for the past twelve months, as all the complaints which have been closed were resolved on an informal basis. Paragraph ten sets out some of the common themes, features and learning points. I have to say, this is very similar to what was the case last year. The main reason or subject matter of complaints is regarding alleged disrespect of other people. As was the case last year, I always focus on trying to resolve complaints in form where it's appropriate to do so and possible to do so. And the final point there, point C in paragraph ten, things written in emails, online and on social media continue to be a common career for exchanges that lead to complaints. And you'll know that in a later item on this agenda, recommending that we clarify the code of conduct, just to make it clear that the code of conduct does apply to online and digital activity, just as it does apply to any activity elsewhere. As noted in the report, following the May elections, we will seek nominations to this committee for town and parish representatives. And the report also, in response to the consent order recommendation, contains a summary of gift and hospitalities that were registered with me last year. Thank you.
Any questions? It's very good. A vast majority of complaints have been dealt with without troubling myself or anybody on this committee. And long may it continue. Or even better, we don't have any complaints at all. Any questions?
No.
Right, let's move on then to item seven. And that relates to appointment of independent persons. You will see that...
Yes.
Yes. You will see that there is a report there. I don't know whether you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was going to say a few words, Chair.
Yes.
Nothing... Not a lot to add to that. We, Waverley, following the localism act and the new standards regime, worked with some of the other councils to appoint jointly and to go through the recruitment process jointly. And this time around, there's now, I think, seven councils that have seen that this is a good opportunity for partnership working and the intention is to appoint a number of independent persons who would be able to advise any of the councils. So effectively, we'll have a panel that we can go to. And the advertisement has been drafted and the intention is to launch that at the end of this month and to have recommendations for appointments in time for annual councils in May. If I can just update the recommendations on page twenty-three of the agenda. Since publishing the agenda, Daniel Bainbridge has advised that the appointment of the independent persons is a function that's reserved to council. So if we can remove the second part of the recommendations there and just recommend that the joint arrangements to advertise shortlist and interview candidates for the appointment of independent persons be agreed and the recommendations for appointments will be brought to the May council for approval by four councils.
Right. Okay. So it won't go to... Nothing will go to the next council meeting?
No.
Concerning this item? The only thing I queried is if we're going up from four to seven councils. I mean, at least three is what's in the recommendation, it seems to be, that we're going to need. I mean, at least three is fine, but in reality, I would thought we're going to need four or five. If... So we're not for a burden, but, you know. At least three, see what the other councils feel and see what candidates you get. Because if you get four or five good candidates, then you may... The joint committee may wish to fight more.
Yes, I think, Chairman, it is a very niche role.
Yes, niche role.
And there will be already been indication that a number of the existing independent persons are happy to stand again. They were invited to submit their CVs. Whether the advertisement would bring out any new people remains to be seen. But yes, I think there is a minimum that there would be.
Minimum of three.
We'll take that feedback, it's helpful, I think, to encourage the consortium to... Four and three would be ideal.
Yeah. And, just as a marker, I have mentioned it to Robin already. On the annex for the independent person protocol on page twenty-seven, you need to make it the standards committee and advice to the committee. And any other reference to panel in that thing needs to be changed to committee. We could just do that. I don't think we need any formal resolution to that effect, it's just... Can we just do it?
You will just do that.
Chairman, just going back to the updated recommendation.
Yes.
Just to be clear, we're not suggesting that the new council should be approving the arrangements for advertising and shortlisting, are we?
No, it's just the actual appointments.
Just the actual appointments, we need to be absolutely clear on that, that was all.
So we have power to do that?
We have power to do that.
We have power to do little one, I think.
Little one, but you did mention modifying one, that was all. I don't think you meant that.
Well, we can either modify one to make it clear that what happens after that is that it will come forward to council for approval or we'll put a second recommendation in to say that.
Number one should be a part two item, wouldn't it?
Yes, yeah.
On our report.
Yeah.
And number two...
To note that the recommendations were...
Just a noting, it's not even a recommendation.
I don't think it's a recommendation, the committee is just...
It will come to the council for approval.
Next time around, yeah.
It's a bit like the chief executive. You formally approve your appointment before you actually offer the role.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the independent person?
Just one small point, it confused me to start with. In the agenda, item seven, we've got, so Waverley has appointed two independent persons. I think that should be, Waverley have appointed three?
Yes, we've had three. The consortium had four, but three were accessible to us.
Yes, and then we say three elsewhere, so three's the correct number, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Good. Right. We now go on to item eight, review of the member code of conduct. I think certain members, I think, are unhappy about certain parts of this. So I think we'll go through it by page by page. So starting on our... And just to note on paragraph four on page thirty-two tells us why we're doing it, why Robin has recommended we do this and how we're doing it. A lot of it's for the avoidance of doubt. So if we can take, therefore, starting at page thirty-five, the little one, that's just to underline the fact that you can put yourself into trouble with emails and social media and so on, to underline that. Then item, sub-paragraph three, I think is quite useful. It just puts in the definition of those public life seven known principles, what we mean in case people don't understand what selfishness means or integrity. And the bit at the very bottom of that page is moved up as a red item at the top. So you understand what that is. Then when you come to page thirty-six, there's a slight confusion with... In paragraph five, the very bottom bit of paragraph five has been deleted. Then it appears at the top and then part of it's deleted again. So it should... If you deleted it totally at the bottom, it should all be in red at the top, probably. But that doesn't matter, just so people can understand that. So then dealing with paragraph little seven, that I think is just to clarify things. When it comes to two little one, I've already had a word with Robin that I don't think I like that amendment. Particularly as some people have been commenting, others could equal the wife or the partner or something, therefore, let's be... Let's keep the definition in.
Go back to seven. Yes, I mean, you've got two issues there. I mean, the second, the last sentence, it deals specifically with the action on disclosable pecuniary interest. Where the first part of seven is a more general statement. In all ways it is a separate paragraph.
Probably, I think that would be clearer.
I mean, these are two distinct points to my mind.
Okay, well, let's have the last sentence as sub-paragraph eight.
Yep. So on two-one, we'll put that...
Back as it was.
Back in, we're putting brackets saying including.
But it seems to be in addition, it's an additional mechanism, isn't it? It's not the sole mechanism. Sole failure, sole consequence of failure.
Sorry, I'm all seven, aren't I?
Yeah, we're seven.
Still on with the seven?
Still on with the seven, yeah.
Okay.
I think having that as a separate point of time...
That is a general one, isn't it?
...is a real concern, I think.
The first bit is general, then.
The first one is general, whether you disclose a pecuniary interest or a non-pecuniary interest. We'll then refer to our, you know, what we can do and then... But in addition to what we can do as a council, all I'd say is...
We can also have a physical. Yeah, all I'd say, the word may also result, rather than just may. But it's in addition to the general, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, except that the arrangements are clear that where there's an alleged non-disclosure of a disclosed pecuniary interest, that then is referred on to the police rather than being dealt with by me. Now, sometimes that's one element within a broader complaint, sometimes it's not.
If the police then don't deal with it, then we would deal with it, wouldn't we?
Then it comes back to me, I have to consider whether there's anything left.
So there could be... I don't say they're in the alternative, but the police would go first and we would then go second. So it is an also, isn't it?
It is also, isn't it?
So I think you're quite right. Putting the word also before the word result would be a good thing. But for our arrangement, say, if there's going to be a potential climate prosecution, then we step back until the police have looked at it first and not muddy the waters beforehand. Yeah?
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, so that's seven and eight. Dealt with two-one.
Could I just ask a quick question on two-one?
Yeah.
What did Robin have in mind on others? I couldn't think, apart from my wife and family, I couldn't think of anyone else. Or was it you just trying to tidy it up, making it simple?
Well, that was the idea, I mean, it includes everyone. You know, any human being, really. But I think it is helpful to have the list that's in there, so I'm happy to put that list back in.
The trouble with a list is always somebody wants to find another one that's not in the list.
Well, that's why I think including, rather than that's not the only list.
Yeah. And little two, no problem. Moving on to thirty, page thirty-seven, no problem with that. That just outlines our other protocols. Then we come to page thirty-five, five little one.
Page thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight, sorry, page thirty-eight. Any problem with that? Seems that makes sense. There's at least two of the known principles in that. Then we have page thirty-nine. Paragraph six, which I found difficult to read and understand until I'd read it about four times. It doesn't have a main sentence before you get to A and B.
No.
That's the practical problem.
It rambles.
It rambles. It's where you've got six lines of awareness and then you've got to then read either A or B on the end of the first bit. And I just think that... Whether we can make that either simpler or...
Would the committee be happy for me to take that one away and try to clarify the wording or...
Yeah, I think, you know, maybe we're going to have to come back anyway with a few alterations. So I think the general principle is, what we're doing now is looking at this, making comments, and then before we approve it, we're going to have to... Yeah, yeah.
I don't think that the whole sentence for that first bit would ever be...
No, I think we need a sentence in the first paragraph before we get to the A and B. Because I read it and thought, where's the, you know...
We got lost.
I got totally lost. By the time I've read six lines and get to the seventh line, I can't remember what the first six lines said, so...
The pub name's all right.
Pub name is right. Blank bits are all right.
Paragraph seven. That's all right. Then we move on to page forty. And I think we have another problem with seven.
I think, Chairman, it's rather good for us all because if you follow this, we abolish planning, we abolish licensing, we abolish everything apart from the things that are listed there because this doesn't link to anything, it just says, you can only participate in these things. So virtually everything we do is ruled out by this paragraph. I don't know if you wrote it, but...
Well, I mean, underscores, pardon me. You may participate in any business of the council where that business relates to...
I think I understand where you're...
And I think what you mean is, you may... All the council, full stop. New sentence, where that business relates to functions of, and then it needs to say what?
Because it doesn't... That just lists things that you can do. Therefore, the things that it is silent on, you cannot do.
Why do we want it? Well, it's in response to questions that have arisen, you know, in respect to the code of conduct. People have asked the question, you know, if they are a tenant or if others are a tenant of the council, what is that member entitled to do? Are they able to conduct the councils?
So what it should be saying is, if you're a council tenant, you may still participate in voting.
That should be at the start, shouldn't it?
Where you are receiving an allowance, you may still take part. So it should be, the last bit of the paragraph should be the situation and then where, what you can do in that situation. So I think it says, for example, you know, where you're a tenant of your authority, provided those functions are to your tendency or needs, you may participate. That's sort of way around, because that's what we want to clarify.
Does it not just need the word still after you may? Would that not be the simplest way?
You may still participate.
Because you're still bound by the rest of the code.
It doesn't prefer to anything, that is a standard item, that would mean that you couldn't be on anything else.
No, it doesn't do that, because it would say, there would need to be... It doesn't say, it doesn't exclude or exclude any other...
Well, it does. It absolutely does.
At the moment, it's a standalone.
It's a standalone, at least what you can do on that side.
If you could read that, if you were looking at that literally, you could say, it would say you may not participate in planning because it's not mentioned.
Not the seven?
I think the word still, word still, that comes there.
No.
But it still makes sense without a whole overall introduction.
I think the committee would prefer to have that absolutely clear without any ambiguity. Because if certain members around this table feel that it excludes us in theory...
So we will take those points, A, B, C and D, and put them around the other way. So we'll say, for example, where you are a tenant of the council, you may...
You may still participate, provided.
Yes.
If you do it that way, then it's clear.
But then what do you do with C and D? Setting council tax, everybody's involved there.
And...
Well, that's the point, that's what it's trying to clarify.
This paragraph is in the context of disclosing interests and then still participating in decisions. So, for example, the setting of council tax, if you are a resident of Waverley, which you will be, or most of you will be in it, then you will be paying council tax and you will have disclosed...
That needs to be clearly set out because it doesn't really do...
I know what you're trying to say.
We can set that out in the preamble, I think. There are a number of situations where you may have an interest, but you can... We can get some work done.
I think just so it's not ambiguous. I know exactly what you're trying to come, you know, what you're trying to do. And I agree with the principle, it's good to put it down. If these are four areas where people think, should I still be taking part? Okay.
I mean, if you follow through what Robin's saying, then you need to list in there where Waverley is the applicant you can still. Because we all have an interest in. You know, when you get planning, which we do, and all Waverley applications come to planning committee. So there, we all have an interest, so that needs to be in the...
Well, and then, of course, the other strategy for this is that we don't... This is seeking to try and clarify something, which up until now, we've thought has been inherent within the rest of the code. The other option is, is we don't include it. You know, our intention was to try and clarify this. If it's not clarifying, we don't know how to put it in there. But obviously, the judgment from officers has been that it would be better to try and clarify it within the code.
And so you experience confusion then from your members?
More questions, I'd say, than confusion. I'm looking at my fellow sisters to see if there's any examples.
Just on that example, you don't, no council has an interest in a planning application brought by the authority. There might be some metaphorical...
Public thinking, I think.
But there is no personal interest. I don't think anybody has raised a query to say, I'm a council taxpayer, can I take part in the budget? I don't think anybody said, I'm getting an allowance as a council, therefore I should take in anything. The one I do think people...
Is, yes.
Is the housing. Where I think some people, you know, look at a certain councillor and say, well, you're a council tenant, you know, why are you taking part in setting the rent? And I think that is worth putting in.
Something personal to you, as opposed to something that's on the...
Yeah, so I think it... I would limit it, actually, just for the housing tenant bit and leave the rest out, because I don't even think the other ones cause anybody any confusion.
And Chair, that's certainly where we started with this.
Yeah, and then you added if you are.
Well, then we've looked at where other councils have clarified that, where they've also clarified a number of other things.
Okay. Well, let's just do housing here as council tenants, because that's the one which genuinely people might be confused. Right, and then there's a new paragraph on dispensations on page forty-one. Anybody got any issues on that one? I think that read all right to me. Okay, good. I think that, so subject to all that, it'll come back to us with two or three paragraphs redone and then we can comment there and have a look at it again before, like, you know, giving our seal of approval. Especially if this committee now meets on the regular cycle and then meet six and a half years, we used to. Right, you are. Well, let's now move on to item nine, to the code of conduct, where various suggestions are being made. Some of them, of course, are just changing us from a panel to a committee. Dealing with page forty-five, I did ask Robin whether we should specifically mention the fact we ought to have a vice chairman as we're a normal committee now. I don't know whether that's just covered by the constitution generally or whether we ought to mention.
So I think the answer there is that this committee, now it is to be a committee, should have a vice chair. That doesn't need to be listed specifically within the terms of reference of the committee. It can be, if members wish it to be.
Do all the committees have that?
They don't all listen, there's plenty within the individual terms of reference.
So I think the general rule is that every committee has a chairman and vice chairman. It's a vague thing written, so let's not be different than anybody else. But let's remember in next May, that we appoint a vice chairman as well.
Yes.
From May.
Could I just ask a clarification on C, nine-two C? The chairman of the committee shall be appointed by council. And how does that happen?
Happens at the meeting in May.
But someone must nominate. And is that, how does that come about? Because I'm not aware for anyone else, which normally do that.
Yeah, all of the, they're all nominated.
So that's true.
When they get the list of committees, it also has chairman against it and vice chairman against it.
Put yourself forward for them.
And the council approve it en bloc.
So the responsibility, the authority for agreeing, if it sits on which committee, lies with the council squarely. What the officers do in advance is liaise with the groups and group leaders and those groups.
So you organise it, sorry.
Well, you organise it so then you receive a paper from council that's giving you a set of proposals which you can agree or agree on an amended basis.
Chairman and deputy are usually voted for, in our case, a group, aren't they?
Yes.
It's strict, if your question relates to who then determines who the chair is, then that's within the committee. But when the nominations come forward to council, we note that there is a proposed chair and that that's...
And usually at the first committee meeting, it's just confirming.
Yes.
It's to approve the chairman and vice chairman.
Well, I think it's noting rather than approving. I think full council have approved it. Anyway.
We'll be the same as everybody else, put in that way.
Just so we are.
Yes. Okay. Welcome, John. You were late to be late because you had another meeting finishing at five.
Right, thank you.
We are now on item just started.
Just before we leave that nine-two C, chairing the committee, does that mean that, does that kind of suggest that nobody but the chairman can chair it? So the chairmen's are sick or unaffordably detained somewhere else?
So when there's a vice, three chairs, when there's a vice chair, the vice chair will be able to stand up?
Yes, obviously, but it doesn't say, it says chairing the committee, the chairman should chair the committee.
Yeah, quite often it says, or, I mean, the constitution generally says if the chairman's not there, the vice chairman will, and if the vice chairman's not there, the committee will appoint someone.
If this is the same with all committees, then it doesn't matter, does it?
Well, I think perhaps we standardise that.
It's generally understood, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay. That's page forty-five. Page...
Sorry, before you leave forty-five, this is terms of reference, role to functions.
Yeah.
I don't see the constitution in there.
Sorry, I didn't hear the point.
I didn't see the constitution in role and function.
It's on the, on the next page.
Is it?
N.
N?
Yeah.
In that case, I missed it because I read it twice.
For... Yes, it's our roles on there.
As I would expect, thank you.
Just going back to that nine-point-two, little C, would it resolve it if we simply deleted the second sentence? That's what my colleague Brian's just suggested, which I think is a good idea.
First sentence, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, the first sentence, yeah.
Because actually, sorry, Chairman, when we look through the constitution before the meeting, actually, we couldn't really find anywhere the constitution that says there will be a vice chairman of committee or, you know, committees will be chaired by a vice chairman in the absence of a chairman. It's just, it's convention.
Right.
And I think it's implicit in the fact that you're nominating the chair and vice chair through the full council process, so if you just took out... So if we just took out the first sentence and said, just make sure it can't be an executive member.
May not chair it. Okay, well, we'll leave out then the chairman of the committee shall be appointed by council.
Because that's the standard.
That's standard like everybody else.
Going back to my other point, is it right to put, to implement and, 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 sorry, to review the constitution at N? Way down the list, that's a considerable amount of detail on independent persons. Should it not have a more greater problems?
Yeah, because I suppose it did it G before, was it? Uh, J before. Quite a bit slipped in.
It's a minor one, too, just.
Yeah.
The standard maybe is to do that once on the end and it's been added.
It, it used to be part of the constitution, especially interest group.
Yeah, it did.
Um, I don't know where it is.
I didn't think it matters, does it? It's not there, that's it.
Can I just, right, just moving on to, um, forty-five and four, well, moving on to forty-six. Just verifying F. Uh, establish a hand to give determined complaints received concerning conduct of borough members. Have we got a panel for town and parish members as well?
We would be the same, so that ought to say borough, I think, I mean, Waverley Borough or town and parish members.
Because we've then got G, which talks about, um, town and parish.
Which, which does cover it off.
Yeah, so that's, so that's the same in relation.
In relation, so G basically says the same as F.
It's because town and parishes also have to do all those things listed, but they, they do have their own separate codes of conduct.
Right.
Um, but we, we liaise with them on those.
Right. Um. Right, then just explaining, we've taken out little I, the original little I. Um, which hasn't, which is, we haven't got an I now, if we haven't taken it out. Um, because it's down at nine-four.
Yeah.
But perhaps we, we haven't got an I, so perhaps we need to up, up the little letters. It goes now H to J.
L.
Um.
Two Ls in a blank.
Two Ls in a blank, yes.
Two Ls in a blank.
It's just, it's, it's tidy that bit up. And we have the, for clarity's sake, the arrangements for selecting the independent person. But obviously the constitution makes it clear that it's the full council that does the appointment. And allowances and everything else. And making it clear that we, we have all the responsibility for codes of conduct for staff and, um, and, and member officer relations, yeah. Everyone happy therefore with the rest of forty-six and forty-seven? So that deals with the protocol. I think, I think we are, maybe we've finalised that one, I don't know, it has to come back. Told you what we'd like to see on it.
Yeah.
Done, okay? Good. So that can go to council and be formally approved up for council, and we will therefore recommend that. Right, okay. Moving on to item ten, scheme of delegation review. Um, now some of this is in blue and some of it's in red, just to confuse us. Some of them, oh, they're all in blue.
No.
No, it is mixed.
The next is it?
One of different offices of work.
Oh, pardon. Just to, just to show I've noticed and not colour right. Um, general principles first, page fifty-four. Are you happy with page fifty-four? And fifty-five. Just putting the strategic director in.
It's, it's also making sure that in their absence, the, the scheme is clear on who can operate.
Yeah. Okay.
Are we happy to accept just an absence or an available? I mean, he may just be travelling.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we intend. There's no restriction on it, it's not, where he's absent.
Otherwise it becomes two things. He's got to be absent how long? And is he got sickness or holiday? Or, I mean, it's basically if he's not there to make a decision, then somebody else has got to make the decision instead.
If he's absent, he's unavailable, I just, I, I'd just stick with the absence.
Chairman, I think, I think officers need to be able to exercise some discretion. I mean, the way that the, um, the scheme works at the moment is, of course, you have an upwards movement of authority if the person who it is delegated to is not around. Um, but you reach a point where that's not possible because the chief executive is the highest in the organisation, so has to come back down. Um, I think if there's an emergency situation and Tom or whoever it is is driving somewhere and is non-contactible for an hour, you would want officers to exercise their discretion that somebody knows where he is. And in those circumstances, the authority needs to be exercised, and there's a check there. Um, but I think you're right, John. I mean, you know, if he's travelling to Gilford or whatever.
I think if he's.
So you think you'd be.
If he's absent.
You think you'd just say absent.
It's a slightly.
But available could cover being on the end of a phone, couldn't it? He may be absent from the office.
But not if he's driving, so I think you need to.
Does that go in there, Carson?
For me, the, the reason we went for absent and unavailable, we did think about whether we would list, you know, various permutations. Because, for example, part of this is that when the chief executive plans to be unavailable, then, you know, he, this gives him a capacity under the scheme to ask others to act on his behalf. Sometimes it may be on an unexpected basis.
An, an absence or illness before, wasn't it?
Quite happy with that available, I think.
I think also this has come from Tom. So if it's Tom wanting to, wanting to do this, in terms of being more flexible amongst the three of them.
Okay. Are we happy then with fifty-four and fifty-five? Then we come to the appendix. And the first change is on page sixty.
Well, I've got a problem with eight A on sixty. I mean, there have to be some financial restrictions in that, because if you read it literally, you know, you could sort of remove carbon carbon charges completely. So there, there has to be within certain limits. But collectively with other unauthorized changes are limited to, you know, impact on the budget of like twenty thousand pounds has been used elsewhere for our budget, you know, but, you know, it, the constitution talks about the authority and limits to change without going back to council. Somehow we need to fit that into there. And it, and it has to be all the, um, previously authorized changes, plus or minus, so, in my view anyway.
This didn't open the door to change anything.
So what it doesn't do is, is change the fact that the constitution's clear that, um, changes which are not within existing budgets, um, add up to a certain threshold, so up to a hundred thousand would come to the executive and over a hundred thousand would come to council. It doesn't, it doesn't change.
It needs to cross refer to that.
And it needs to say in accordance with the constitution.
Really in isolation, it, it, is, is, yeah. I know it wouldn't happen, but I mean, you, you're just reading it, it gives you carte blanche to do anything, to do anything.
I mean, it, the constitution is mentioned in seven, should we be mentioning it in eight A as well?
Yeah.
I know it's built in places, but.
Yeah, you need it with this, I think.
Yeah, within the limits of the constitution, yes, financial ratios or whatever.
You either sort of put it as a preface to the, the panels of the section one-five white officer, and it covers everything on that.
Everything's in the court, so is that?
And then it would fly.
I'm not, I'm not looking at my colleagues, but I'm happy for it to refer to the, you know, the, those budget three constraints that are already set out within the constitution.
It must.
Well, I just don't want eight A, I think the worry council then has is eight A may be taken in isolation without reference to other delegations.
It needs to be there.
Need to take that ambiguity out. So can we change that so that it?
We've got to put in a subject to, to qualify.
Yeah, subject to, that's right, it's a qualification. I mean, the principle of giving a delegating freedom to do it, it, I don't, no problem with it. It's just the extent to which it can be done without having the checks and balances coming into play.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, good. We then move on to sixty-three.
Yeah, I've got a similar thing in seventeen. Um, I, I, on property, because we've, again, we've got a investment advisory board and we've got an invest, property investment strategy which sets out limits and things, which need to get into that system somehow or other.
I think the intention on this one, um, through the chairman is where, um, for example, the, um, the executive have, have had a number of, um, matters come through to them, uh, recently where we've received requests under the leasehold reform act, uh, for extensions of lease, the council doesn't have any, um, legal option, um, other than to do so. But because the, the extension period is outside the twenty-five years, they have to come through to.
It wasn't the red bit I was worrying about. What I was worrying about was, was the quarter million pound limit.
Yeah, what we haven't.
What we haven't caught up with is the fact.
This hasn't caught up with the fact we've changed.
Advisory board in here with a whole load of, uh, powers and, and levels of authority, which, which needs to be, get it, got into it.
So we perhaps should have as a, um, at the beginning of paragraph seventeen, then the insertion of the subject to the powers of the investment advisory board or, because this wasn't written.
And, and the, and the best, but, but property investment strategy.
Any investment, property investment strategy.
What if we could pick that up by, this one could be, the number of these state that it's an authority after consultation with. So perhaps we could.
Well, because the investment advisory board has got some quite specific powers.
Which those powers can't be taken away by officers.
Oh, that's right. But the council has delegated its authority to the investment advisory board.
And you can't, the officers can't take that.
Can't take that away.
Well, they're not. I mean, this, this delegation's predated that, so the council's made that decision, knowing that that is already in the scheme, delegated to officers, and has chosen not to change it. So, and also, I'm not sure the investment advisory board would be interested in anything under two hundred and fifty thousand.
No, it's not. It's, it, it, it's not, but it, it, it's, it's, as it's writ, as it's written, anything with a value in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, goes through the executive. Well, it's not quite true any longer because, you know, the, the investment advisory board and the investment strategy make it clear, you know, how, how investment in property is now handled.
Should instead of the executive, should, should we be putting in the?
I don't think it can because the IAB is not, not, we can take it away and have a look at it, the IAB is not.
I mean, I think, I think what we're trying to say is, um.
It's an executive function.
We're, we're quite happy with what we're trying to achieve.
I know, I know what council fans drive at, absolutely.
Yeah. We want to remove the ambiguity if somebody says, well, what about investment advisory board? Okay, good. So that comes to us. Then I think on page sixty-four and sixty-five is various updates of legislation. Which I think are neither here nor there. Just tidying up. Make sure it's all, okay. And then I think, okay. Right, page eighty. Writing to legal absence, I mean, obviously anticipate if someone is ill. Um, rather than having a by-election.
In the past, it's had to be approved by council.
Doesn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Sometimes it drops between kind of July and October and you get them in a hole.
So I think this is probably a sensible, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Happy with that. And then, um, eighty-four. Um, I wasn't quite sure why we deleted the first bit.
Yeah, sorry.
Why delete, I said, in my notes.
So, uh, the, there used to be a fee under the old data protection act for what are called subject access requests.
Yeah.
Under data protection act, it was ten pounds, so it's supposed to cover our costs, but of course it didn't. Um, but under the GDPR that came in last year, that fee was done away with and abolished. So there is no fee, and therefore there's no fee to waive if there's hardship. What there is now is a, is a, an ability to charge a fee, um, if a request is manifestly excessive. I appreciate on the face of it, it looks as though you, you know, you read it and say, well, we're not going to help out those in hardship. But actually, there's no fee whatsoever anymore. But if there's a burden on the authority.
So the resumption's changed the other way.
Yeah, yeah, and it's nothing to do with.
We will waive the fee, we're now saying we could charge a fee with indiscretion, so that makes sense.
Fine.
Okay, that's good. That's the end of that item. Is there any, um, this has got to obviously come back for a few alterations, so we can't approve it as such. But, um, I think we, I mean, all the alterations have been agreed in principle, it's just a question of getting the wording to our satisfaction.
Yeah.
So I think we'll have to come back next cycle just for us to formally approve it, okay? Which takes us now on to number eleven, elected member access to information. I suppose the first question is, do we need one? And if so, then we'll look and see if we're happy with the wording, which is on page eighty-seven. Um, Robin, could you give a background as to why we have a new, uh, guidance and protocol?
Sure. Um, thank you, Chair. So the report arises following a meeting in June twenty eighteen. A number of, um, officers and interested members to discuss whether or not the council needed in addition to the access to information protocol set out within the constitution, whether we needed a separate guidance or policy notes in respect of what information members can access, how that decision would be made, et cetera. So it was agreed at the time that it'd be worth me drafting something, um, and then sharing it with the standards committee to consider further. So what you've got in the report is a potential guidance note to sit alongside the constitution and a, a sort of a workflow which would tell anybody reading it the process that would be followed, um, when that access to information protocol is, is being operated. So, um, as the report said, committee members are invited to consider the documents, to consider if a note of this type is needed, and if so, whether there's any changes you want to make to what's proposed. Thank you.
I would say that I was at that meeting and was discussing. I, I've got a couple of questions on, on it, but where do you see this fitting then? And you said it's an advisory note alongside the constitution, it's just going to float as if it would be referred to in the constitution at all.
Um, it, I'm not necessarily sure it would be referred to in the constitution. Um, my, my intention would be that we would share it once it was agreed with all members. Obviously for incoming members, when we have a new council term, it would be part of the suite of documents that would be shared with them. It would be posted on the website, and those members who are using modgov would see it appear on their.
Probably have a footnote in the constitution. Because I mean, people, when they read the thing about sharing information, if they had a footnote to say there is a separate.
Further guidance.
Further guidance is available on the website or something. So let's, let's look first as to the principle. Are we agreed in principle to have this guidance and protocol? People happy with it?
Do we manage to keep this forty-five years from now?
Probably because the law has changed. Got this data protection and all that stuff, I suppose.
It wasn't specifically in response to the data protection, no. The, the, the request was, was really, you know, when a man wants access to information, what are they allowed to access and how does that process work? And when we had the, the discussion meeting, we talked through the fact that the basic rules are set out there within the constitution. And I think the desire was to have, we had, we had a debate at the time. And I think the desire was to have, we had, we had a debate at the time, do we need this, or don't we need it? Um, and we, there were different views around the table about that, but the decision was that we would bring it to here for further discussion.
But does it raise more problems than it solves?
Hmm.
I mean, for example, on the flow chart, you know, who decides whether the member needs the information to perform their duties as a council? And what's the protocol for that? So when you, you, you cascade into the next step, once you, once you open it, so.
I think one of the problems at the time was, how does someone appeal if they're getting blocked? What was the process, and how does someone get appealed, and I think if the flow chart, maybe it's a modification, but if the flow chart says it's very clear what happens, I'm, I do have a que, a question.
I like the flow, I like, like the concept of flow charts, I mean, I always find them extremely helpful, the question is, is it? No, e- each stage you've got to be able to back it up with something which, which deals with that particular part of the process. And who's doing what to whom.
And, you know, as it says within the notes, you know, we begin from, uh, the, the default position is that we, we provide information, and also, all of the decisions that are brought to members, obviously it's the role of the officers to make sure that as members we give you the information you need to help you make that decision, and would respond positively to any further requests for information. There has to be a really good reason why information is not provided.
So there's a presumption you get it, and then it says you get it unless there's a good reason why you shouldn't. And then it begs the question, what do we mean by a good reason not to, you know? Because you always, because you always bleed out, you know, confidential papers to the, to the public, can't be trusted, that probably shouldn't be really.
It, it, it's again the definition of need, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, a councillor may feel that he needs it, or is highly desirous of having it, but someone else within the, let's say, the decision-making hierarchy may not feel that he needs it. So how do we define need, and who is the, the person, committee group that's going to say, you need it?
Yes.
And it, it's a difficult one, I, I like the presumption in favour of releasing unless.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's how we define the unless that's, that's going to be the difficulty, because I can see cases where people ask, they're like, why, do you need it?
Yes, I mean, if you ask for some information that, on a subject matter that's something you're not on the committee and it, and.
Doesn't affect your ward.
Doesn't affect your ward, not going to full council, so you're never going to be involved in the decision-making at any stage, then one would say, you don't need it.
You don't need it. But on the other hand.
Then they'll say, but, you know, remember of my ward, actually, as I asked about it, and I can't answer the question.
Yes, exactly.
So you go off.
So you go off.
Yeah, and it gets complicated, and it's down to who decides what need means.
Funny, we, we haven't had any, from my perspective, we haven't had any issues around this. We've certainly had examples where, we've obviously had examples every day where information is just provided by default. Also had, um, situations where members ask for information and it's just freely given. And then we've had more complex situations where members ask for information that's been previously exempted, and previously only been looked at by a small number of people, which is then, um, published, because the situation's moved on. So, I suppose I'm concerned, the core rules allow us to do what we want, but the purpose of this document was to, to bring some guidance around those core rules that exist.
Yeah, I think the balance of the meeting that we had was very much that you took the view that it was adequately covered by the, the things. The, the counter view from someone who'd asked for some information and was refused, um, was the process is very unclear, and how, if you disagree with an officer, how does that, that basically go about? I mean, it's, it's an interesting one, because I think that, um, there is a concern that, that I had in those discussions, and it's not covered in this, is that members have got to have a clear, direct line from the information to their waverly job. I think in the question that we were looking at, it was actually a town and parish job and a waverly piece of information. So I think that to have.
And, and that would just be an example where, you know, there's, there's no reason for the authority to provide that, that information. Or, or no, no reason beyond what any member of the public would.
If it hadn't been restricted, it probably would have gone to that member. I mean, there was, and I can't remember all the details, Robin, but I think it was a slightly unreasonable request, um, personally, but the, the reason for this discussion and for putting a protocol around was that there is, in some people's mind, the lack of clarity as to how this process works. Robin's very clear, he knows exactly where to, to go and get it. I think, I'm not that strong, but I think I would favour having something like this, and having it given especially to new members, right, so it just reinforces this, this issue. But I'm, I'll take up the people's views, as I say, I like the, the flow charts.
I mean, I, I'd be happy to see it there, provided at least somewhere else we had a clear understanding as to how the decision was made to say, maybe.
And who has the final say?
Who makes the decision?
Well, that's with me.
We need to, we're going to, we need, at least in the backup, to have that set out somewhere.
It, it's one of these situations, through you, Chair, where you, it's difficult to try and set out in writing all of the circumstances, all, all of the parameters that I need to consider, and they mustn't become constraining, whereas there's a clear duty for me to provide, and to oversee the provision of information being given to councillors, unless there's a very good reason not to. So that's one of the reasons I tried to keep the flow chart basic, because there's a number of key principles here. Is it already in the public domain?
Oh, yeah.
Do you need it? Is it confidential? Those are headings, and actually, if I were to break those down into the specific, you know, parameters of, of, of making that decision, it's certain that I will miss something.
And can I ask you a question then? If councillor A arrives and says, I'd like this piece of information, you look at it and you decide, councillor A, you don't need it. So you say, no, you can't have it, and it's not within the confidential area.
If, if it's, if it's not a confidential piece of information, I'm simply just going to, I'm just going to point the member to it anyway.
Hmm, I mean, do they have a right of appeal against your decision?
I don't think so.
But I mean, these are the gaps that are already there.
Oh, yeah, they're already there.
Doesn't provide it anywhere.
But once the squatsy pubbers this, it becomes more, more exposed.
More exposed, the gap becomes more exposed.
And, and also, I would like to say that the conversation, although I know you're only paraphrasing, councillor Ward, that's not how the conversation would tend to be. I wouldn't say, you know, you want this information, I've looked at it, no, you can't have it. I would actually be asking that member the question, you know, i- if it's a confidential thing, you know, I need to know why it is that you, that you want that, and it's a conversation, it's not, it's not something that's done remotely by me, and then the decision is just issued, it's a dialogue with the councillor.
Following your flow chart, I mean, it would seem to me that, is it confidential? Perhaps should come higher up the chart than does he need it, and then it gets more purposeful. Because if it's not confidential, there isn't a point, there isn't a problem in giving it to him anyway, is there?
I mean, certainly the first bit of the flow chart is right, is it in the public domain, in other words, you can have it anyway.
Is it in the public domain, fine, you can have it, is it confidential?
Maybe the question before the need.
The question before the need, then, reverse those two, then you have a flow chart that, that, that follows in order of, if you like, importance and whatever.
Clear, very clear guidance, um, and, and legislation as well, um, about the fact that councillors don't have a roving commission within the organisation to just go, go looking for any information, without any reason to do so. The basis of the access to information is that as members being asked to make decisions in the public interest, you, you know, the authority will make sure you have all the information you need to, to make that decision. So the question of whether or not you need to see the information is, is quite an important one. I mean, to, yeah, we could, we could argue around which, or do these go in?
But surely that then means that you've got the confidential exempt information, and there's other information that you decide is confidential, and we don't need to see it. I'm, I'm, I'm with councillor Ward, if you swap those two over, so, um.
Chair, I'd offer, offer a re, an explanation as to why, is I didn't draft the flow chart, I don't know if we did, Robin did, but, um, there's a reason why it is ordered in that way, because you're starting off with the widest, so, so the majority of information published and in this building is, is, is open access, that's the principle, particularly when it comes to committee reports and so on. So I think the way that I read the flow chart is, it's starting off with, is it already in the public domain, which is the widest section of that information? Does the member need it to inform their public duties as a coun, as a councillor, that's probably the next widest? And then, is the confirmation, conf, information confidential? And that's actually quite a narrow, that's quite a narrow set of information, so I think it's staging, staging down, if you like. So you're cutting out, you're saying yes most of the time, and it's only when you get down to the confidential that you're starting possibly to say no. Um, it's in respect of things like legal advice and confidential reports and so on and so forth, so. And generally, generally, sorry, just on that, that point that councillor Alcibroes raises, I strongly think of a situation where confidential information will be confidential outside of the exemptions that exist in the seventy-two act, which is, which is what those are. They're just the sets of confidential information that you see at the beginning of reports. But happy, happy if you don't agree, but I think that's why it's all been in, in that way in the flow chart.
But can you envisage a situation where information that is not confidential will be refused access?
Well, if it's subdued.
Because if, if, if you're, if you're not going to refuse access to stuff that's not confidential, then that need is in the wrong place.
Can you think of an example of non-confidential information that you would be giving?
I can think of an example where a councillor may view it that way, and, and I would have sympathy with it being more open rather than more closed, we're trying to be a transparent council.
Can I help? What would that be?
Councillor's opinions?
Councillor's opinions are confidential by virtue of the fact that the legal advice authority are partly exempted from exempt categories. Now, we choose to put that information into committee reports, depending on whether we think it should be in the open section or in the exempt section, but.
But in planning, you, you, you will quite often be referred to, you've taken counsel, you know, it's, it's on the ordinary yellow sheets, and it says councillor's opinion as we've obtained, which says A, B and C. Now, if a councillor says, I, I would like to see councillor's opinion, you know, so I can just read it in full, um, is that confidential when the highlights of the opinion has already been disclosed?
I, I think it depends on the situation, and that's why we, I mean, where you've got papers that are going out to members, we go through this process always, we consider whether it's exempt and why it's exempt. And that's important to do that, because later down the line, we may decide that there's no reason for it to be withheld anymore, so further requests may come in, and then it, it, then it's disclosed. This is about making sure that we apply that discipline to things which may not have been put into committee papers, that's related to the question above, you know, wh- what's, what's the reason for wanting to see the information?
Well, if we have a big paper in, in a planning committee, let us say, and someone else who lives in the affected area, not necessarily the exact ward, is not on the planning committee, and he says, I'd like to see those pink papers because people are asking me about it, and I need to feel confident within myself that I can talk to them without necessar, without obviously revealing it. You know, I, I can't come up with twenty reasons off the top of my head, I just feel uncomfortable with the way it's, it's ordered.
If a member goes into private, right, within, within our, our system, you can see, see the papers, and I've occasionally done that with other committees.
All members can see all pink papers through, through mod gov. So just picking up Robin's example, I was thinking back to an example outside of planning committee with the Brightwell's Development Agreement a few years ago, where we, where we changed it, and you, of course, we had the challenge, the judicial review. We summarised that advice quite heavily, and we, I think we may have published a full advice at the back of the, at the back of the report, but we put, we produced a summary for the public in the open section of the report, but we then produced a full, full advice for members. Um, you know, it's case by case, on the paper, councillor Dill's got it, it is case by case.
G P D R, if it's addressed to a certain person without their permission, you can't.
Well, that's one of the classifications under which something would be marked exempt. So, yeah, that was a good point that Daniel's made, we've got to remind ourselves that being exempt doesn't mean you as members can't see it, this is part of the process we've got to go through to understand what sort of information is this that we're talking about? And that's also why it's clear at the bottom that even if it's provided to you, it's been marked exempt.
It stays exempt.
That's how it's handled, so that, that's for the benefit of the organisation, but also for the council, making sure that we're clear that when information comes to councillors, you know how it needs to be dealt with.
Mate, I mean, knowing how this works internally amongst, you know, amongst officers, in terms of if Robin has a request for, for a piece of information, or if anyone actually, I mean, it could be any head of service or director, chief executive, they may take advice internally, chairman, from, from me or from my team, consultant democratic services team. Um, so that process goes on, so, I mean, there maybe there's something to work into this around, around, maybe that comes to what councillor Band is saying, but without it becoming so rigid that it binds the monitor officer.
Right.
Um, by a series of, you know, very rigid factors, because, looking back to councillor Ward's point, or the answer to your point, it does change on a case-by-case basis, you know.
I'm just trying to, sorry, I'm just trying to envisage a reason why a non-confidential item would be deemed to be not of need to a councillor, and I cannot come up with a, a thread there at the moment.
That is still, that is not in the public domain. So it's, you're talking about something that's not in the public domain, and it's not confidential.
But a councillor feels he needs it.
As documents that are not confidential, and not in the public domain.
If you can't think of one, then that need thing is not necessary.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a document which is twenty years old, it's before the electronics, it's away in archiving, I think it's a perfectly reasonable question, and there's an amount of effort to go and get it, I think it's a perfectly reasonable question for someone to ask, do you really need it? You know, and that's probably the, the, the one area where I think this is probably, if it's electronic, if it can be accessed, and it's not confidential, I can't say you say no.
That, that's where that provides, in that, that part of the air, when he says that, you know, if it's not confidential, then the, any member of staff can direct the member to it.
Yeah.
File if you've said you need it.
It's the roving.
You're going through the needs test first.
It's the needs no stroke roving point that Robin.
Yes, I appreciate what we're trying to get at.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it could be, you know, a file in a leisure services filing cabinet, I don't use filing cabinets anymore, but.
I think it's a perfectly reasonable request to ask a councillor what the need is, and I mean, I don't go back to a specific, I'm not in the name names, but it was to be used in a tanned environment where the issue came, the document arrived in a borough. And I think that it's a very, it was a very reasonable question for anyone, the monitor out, or anyone to ask, why do you need this? The problem came there was, it then went past that middle box, down into the bottom, um, in terms of confidentiality as well, I mean, it actually should have been able to be stopped, um, at the first level.
I, 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 yeah, I remember which.
Do you remember the case?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think, I think I'm getting the impression that we think this might be useful, because it's just showing quite a lot of gaps that, that, that are in the constitution. It's just a question of whether we want to make any changes, or whether we just produce this now, and then see with experience whether any parts of this, uh, guidance and protocol need to toughening up or clarifying. So let's go through it, is there? Can I, can I restrict it on paragraph two? Yeah. Um, again, this might be contentious, but based on previous discussion, but majority should really be placed, I think, with necessary. I mean, majority is a very abstract terms, if, if, if there is going to be restrictions, it must be based on need, not on volume.
I mean, Chair, the reason, just to explain the reason for that being in there, it was actually just to make it clear to anybody reading this guidance, that, it could almost be said the vast majority, you know, the general rule is that when members want information, they get it, and then that's qualified underneath by the, the sort of, that is, you know, the need, rather than.
It stays as it is.
Unless there's a good reason for not to.
Yeah, it was the same.
Yes.
I think I'd leave it, I mean, that's, what we're saying is, the bulk of everything we've got is for everyone to see.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I still prefer necessary, but if you put it in brackets. Well, you've got the need, you see, the necessary, then you're talking about necessary and need, I mean, what's the difference? But you don't get that information because it's the majority that you get it because you have a need.
Yeah, but the second paragraph uses the word need.
Sorry, Karen.
Second sentence.
Do you need the first sentence? At all?
Well, I suppose.
Doesn't that second sentence say?
Unfortunately, there's a degree to, you know, in the, the reason. Unfortunately, there's a degree to, you know, in the reason, the discussion underpinning this, you know, what I wanted to make clear in this guidance note was that the majority of information is provided and is already accessible to members. Rather, and it was trying to, yeah, trying to look at the possibility that members may think that actually the majority of information is withheld from them.
Well, you sort of have an assumption, I was just going to say, the assumption that, you know, information is available to all members. However, you know, on occasions, you know, this, there are reasons why certain individuals...
I withdraw my comments, but I welcome the discussion because this is what happened on a previous occasion. I don't envy the person drafting this. No, I think it's saying in the first sentence, you can see the majority of the information. Then you whittle it down and need arises. So it's a statement, general statement, it's a general statement, it's a process.
Yeah.
So are we happy with that protocol or... Sucking at sea, the basis of sucking at sea. See how it pans out and if we need to make a change, we'll make a, you know, a good start. Good enough for us to publish it and approve it. Okay, so...
Chairman, can I just pick up something from the previous report? I forgot to bring to your attention, Fiona's got some copies, but there was an additional exertion into the scheme of delegation which we produced prior to publication in December and I forgot to raise it, so my apologies. Keep it going. When you thought you were going to be...
Okay, well, item 11, we therefore go along with a recommendation, yes? That's printed and the protocol as printed, flow chart as printed and then we'll wait to see what happens.
We'll circulate it to members now, you know, and then obviously with the new induction, we'll include it as part of the document.
Right, one item that I don't know about.
Sorry, on the scheme of delegation, members asked for that to come back or for the changes to come back. So we'll just include that additional...
And what is it?
Well, I was thinking that actually members haven't seen this yet, so, sorry, there was no reason why. I just, I just forgot that members should see it, comment it now and we'll take it away.
Nobody sees it.
Don't give us the Fiona.
It doesn't make sense for us to insert it and bring it back.
I think that chart would be referred to a number of times.
So this is to deal with a situation where, under regulation, so just the note there, under reg 73 of the SIL regs, the council are allowed to accept the payment part of a SIL liability in the form of one or more land transfers representing a legal payment in kind and the criteria against which maybe we would assess an offer of such in kind payment have been agreed by council already and are set out in the phasing and siling kind policies. The proposed delegation to section 151 officer in consultation with the portfolio holder for finance would enable any application to pay, applicant, I think it should be, to pay SIL in kind rather than in cash to be considered and determined, sorry, it should be any application. Now, the intention here is that this would only be in very, very exceptional circumstances and would likely be in the form of saying, but of course that's all dealt within the policy, but in terms of how it would be assessed. But this is simply the delegation to the section 151 officer to undertake that, that delegate authority.
Can you remind me what happens to the town and parish's share if it is done in kind rather than cash?
I do not know, I'm afraid, councillor Ward, but I can answer that. I can go away and answer that.
Can I take X dogs for a walk?
I do know the answer to that one and the town parish proportion would have to be still paid over to them in cash, which is one of the reasons why we, the council would only treat this very exceptionally because there would be a potential category...
So the parishes still get their cash and the council get 75% or whatever it is as land? That's how it works?
Yes, but the land would have to be land that could be used for providing infrastructure.
That's in the SIL policy, isn't it?
Yes.
Or part of the set of five senses, necessarily have to be the full one.
So the bottom box is an explanation and the top box is what wishes to appear in the schedule.
We just need complete reference to the document, the waverly document, don't we?
Well, it is defined by the base in SIL.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, there's document control policies flying around somewhere, sometimes people use.
Should we be more specific about the...
That's all I'm saying.
We can be more specific.
Can we be a bit more specific about the way that is phasing and siling kind policy? Well, you know, the up-to-date policy in there, if the policy changes, then we've got to change, well, like acts of power.
Up-to-date, whatever the...
We change it, but it should be the actual policy we're talking about. So subject to that, are we agreeable to put this in, in the document that's coming back to us?
It will come back to you.
And then we can see it as it is being placed. Thank you for doing that. Right, I think that concludes the meeting. We don't need to exclude the press and public. That's the meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance.